I'd like to welcome everyone out to our Leighton City Council meeting this evening. It's September 18th, and we appreciate this many folks in our audience tonight. This is awesome. So with that, it's customary for us to always start our meetings with a prayer and a pledge. And tonight, Councilmember Clint Morris is going to lead us.
Thank you, Mayor. I will offer a prayer, and then afterwards, if you'll rise with me, we'll repeat the pledge of allegiance. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful this evening to meet as a city, grateful for our founding documents and for the ability to be self-governed. We're grateful for the rights that Thou has given us and the ability to protect those. We ask that Thou would please be with us this evening and grant us wisdom as we make decisions. We bless those, ask that Thou would bless those here in attendance as well with safety, and we're grateful that they are here, grateful for all of the city employees who help to make our community what it is, and we are grateful for them. And these things I say and we ask and do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please rise.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Okay, Council, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. And as you can see by the agenda, we have several sets of minutes that need to be adopted. So I'll ask first if anybody had any corrections on those. Okay, seeing that there was no corrections, then I would ask that one of you please make a motion and state the date, well, the meeting and the date, if you could, please.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve minutes of Leighton City Council meeting, May 1st, 2025; City Council meeting, May 15th, 2025; City Work Me, City Council Work Meeting, August 7th, 2025; Council meeting, August 7th, 2025; Work Meeting, August 21st, 2025; Council Meeting, August 21st, 2025; Special Work Meeting, August 26th, 2025; Work Meeting, September 4th, 2025; and Council Meeting, September 4th, 2025.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we adopt the minutes as written. Kim, thank you very much. That's a big list of minutes there. So with that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to our municipal announcements tonight, and so any council member which has any information they'd like to share with our citizens, you're welcome to do so at this time.
This just in.
I love it.
So Parks and Rec Department has been working very hard, as they do always, to keep great recreation opportunities for our families, for our, all of our citizens. Coming up next month, October 17th at 6:00 PM, 6:00 to 8:30 PM, I believe, will be the Halloween Bash, always a good, good event, lots of Halloween games, costume contests, food. Also, Whispers in the Dark will be the next day on October 18th, and we'll have more info on that coming, in our coming meetings.
Yeah, that will be, I think, put on by the Davis Arts Council, and he'll be out here in the park, like, well, in the amphitheater this time, actually. Okay, yeah, so, anyway, that'll be in, that's gonna be a fun event.
Yeah.
There's a lot of other events coming on up, which, okay, I'll let everybody else speak first. Go ahead. Say what? You guys can.
Thanks, Mayor.
I speak enough, so that's why I'd like to include everyone.
So September and October present lots of opportunities for Leighton residents to get together and hang out and do fun things. So on the 24th of September, the Fire Department is having their annual open house, and that's going to be out at the Kendall O'Brien Prevention, or the Kendall O'Brien Fire Prevention Open House. It'll be out at the fire station on 2200 West. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Lots of cool things for the kiddos, as well as for the adults, to participate in and to see. We also have some partnerships that we do with our Leighton Communities That Care, and actually, tonight, we had our Strengthening Families class, which is for parents and youth ages 10 to 14, starting, it's a six-week program. We also have a Prevention Week for Communities That Care. October 6th is Family Dinner Night. This is in conjunction not just with Leighton CTC, but the other Davis County CTCs as well, so North Davis and South Davis. And this is a free family dinner. There'll be games, also a magician, this is gonna be in Pioneer Park in Kaysville, but it is free. And then October 7th and 8th, there are a couple of workshops that are also free to the community. And then I want to highlight again the Born to Succeed Youth Summit. This is a summit that's for youth in grades nine through 12 in Davis County. It's free. It will be held on Saturday, October 11th, at North Leighton Junior High, or, excuse me, North Davis Junior High, and it'll be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Again, this is a free program, and one thing I want to highlight is that the inspirational speaker is going to be Braxton Nielsen. I see Carleen in the audience. She and I go to Bryce Canyon for Communities That Care Prevention Coalition summits, and Braxton came and spoke to us this past summer, and he was a champion bull rider from our northern Utah area, had some setbacks, and he now is a, he has, he's a speaker. He goes around and talks to not just young people, but adults as well, and he's got a really great story, a great program, so that is free. And then the last thing I will mention is the Circle of Security Parenting Class will be at Heritage Elementary, starting on October 22nd. That'll be on Wednesdays. All of these are free. You can look at the Leighton Communities That Care Facebook page, or you can go to dbhutah.org, which is the Davis, Davis Behavioral Health website. That's it.
Perfect. Okay. Anyone else? If not, I'll go ahead and mention one more item that I think is one of those opportunities to kind of really show your respect and appreciation for those that fought in the Vietnam War. This year marks their 50th anniversary, and so in doing so, the Vietnam veterans are gonna have a special walk. It's, they haven't had one before, but they're gonna start down here at the library and then end up at the wall, and it's gonna be on Saturday, September 27th, at 9:00 AM. So I would love for everyone to just come out and just kind of line the streets and kind of show your respect, and then certainly gather with them up at the wall. And this is, just like I said, it's to commemorate their 50th anniversary of, of that conflict. And then, of course, in November, please come out for their parade. So with that, Council, if there's no other announcements, we'll go ahead and get, go down to our verbal petitions and presentations, and this is a, you know, it's an inspiring, yet sometimes very emotional, and yet at the same time rewarding, portion of our meeting. And as a governing body, we do like to acknowledge all those folks that we possibly planned that, that really deserve this type of recognition. So to start out with, I'd like to turn the time over to Lieutenant Bobowski and Sergeant Lewis, or Sean Lewis, if you could, if you wouldn't mind coming up and making a presentation in, like I said, sometimes this is a hard, hard time for us, but to make a presentation honoring one of our crossing guards. So with that, I'm gonna turn the time over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not exactly sure where to, where to look, so I'll just kind of look all over the place. I typed this up and put it in big letters, still need these, so I apologize about that. Good evening, I'm Sean Lewis. Thank you for the promotion, Mayor. I'll expect that in the paycheck.
Yeah, sorry.
But I'm not a sergeant, but I am the crossing guard supervisor for the Leighton Police Department. This is my lieutenant, Lieutenant Clint Bobowski. And I just wanted to say a couple things. I'm also very happy to see so many people here, a lot of the family members of whom I'm about to speak, and it, it does kind of warm the heart to see that. On January 28th of this year, we lost a good man who was killed while performing his duties as a crossing guard. Steve Winn had been a guard since 2022, working daily to ensure the safety of the children who crossed Main Street towards Bayview Elementary. Steve was loved by the children that he crossed, the Bayview community, both the neighborhood and the school, other crossing guards and the member of the Leighton, members of the Leighton Police Department. I was honored to know him and to be his supervisor. Steve's smile and his pleasant demeanor was contagious, and he brightened each day with his humor and his stories. The effect that Steve's death had on this community was great, surpassed only by the effect that his life had on the community, and it's the latter that we choose to remember and to memorialize. Irene, do you want to step up? Okay, thank you. In celebration of Steve's honorable and dedicated service to Leighton City, and on behalf of Mayor Petro, this council, the Leighton City Administrative Staff, and those of us within the public safety community, I'm honored to provide Steve's wife and family with this plaque, a duplicate of which hangs in the hall outside this chamber for all to see. We hope that this gesture adequately portrays the gratitude we share for Steve and his service, and that it helps keep Steve's memory and ultimate sacrifice in the hearts of those he served. Thank you.
I was gonna say, ma'am?
Would you want to come up?
I think the council would like to come down and show our appreciation as well. It was a hard one, it happened, and it's still hard today, so our hearts are with the family, and thank you all for being here to show that type of support. Okay, now we'll move on to a little bit different type of acknowledgement and presentation, and this one is one that we like to do each year, and that is to acknowledge our youth court graduation, and then, of course, swearing in our new members. So with that, as pointed out earlier, we have Carleen Kidman, who's their advisor, so Carleen, if you'd like to come up and, you know, do your thing, because you do it so well, and nobody else can top it.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, family, and everyone else. This is our 28th year, and so we've been going for 28 years, and so I feel, I'm feeling really old, and I'm gonna embarrass somebody, because one of our, one of our youth from our very first year is here.
Yes.
And two of his children are part of youth court. So thank you for your service, and especially sharing your youth with us. So it makes me feel really old that I knew him when he was that age, but, anyway, this last year, we had a phenomenal year. We, we received 142 cases.
Phew.
And so we have been really, really busy, and these kids are remarkable. We completed 96% of those cases, and I can tell you the ones that didn't complete, why they didn't, but, you know, we tried, and so we're not 100%, but we're still 96. That's pretty good. I don't think very many programs can compete that way. This year, since August until last night, we have, we have received 32 cases. So we have been running three panels a week, and these kids are phenomenal. And so, you see, our numbers are small. We do have like 25 kids that are, that are trained and come as much as they can. Wednesdays are hard, because they take, I mean, Thursdays are hard for them to come, they take Wednesdays off. But the youth did do over 1,767 hours last year, with another 373 hours of training. So they are remarkable, and I just want to thank them, because they're, the program is because of them, and because of you guys, your support. So, so thank you that we're still going strong after 28 years, and so I hope we continue for several more. So with that, if it's okay, I'll read them, give, I have a certificate, and they'll come up, get it, and then you guys go through, round here, and shake hands, and then come and behind, behind the table, you know, that side of the table. We have a joke on where the table is when they're sitting up there, and then they'll store you in and stuff, okay? Does that work? Okay, so those are, they're, they're new ones. Allison, come on, you give me first. Okay. Amida? Yay. Ellie didn't show, didn't come. Jacob couldn't, Jacob lives in Morgan, and he comes down every week to be part of Leighton Youth Court, so he couldn't come. Caleb couldn't get off work. So then, Lila? We have a couple adults that come and help when they can to, and so we give them out, we're giving them out instead of, you know, graduation stuff, we give them out a pin. So I just want to thank Heather, I don't like that look, for, she comes out, and she actually hung out with all of us for two years now, there's one here, a pin, at our conference, and helped drive, so we really appreciate her hanging out with all, you can go up there. And then I'll let her come around again, and she can get her, one for her daughter, Caitlin, who's just finished her sixth year with us, but Caitlin's not feeling well tonight, so, so we'll let her, Kay, now you can come and get Caitlin's. I didn't want to do it together, and Caitlin has finished six years with us, and she's phenomenal. So, and then some of the others that have been here for a year. Ben, he just had surgery a couple weeks ago, so he's still recovering, so we excused him. Luke, Betsy Porter, I'll read their names, Reese Simone, they, most of them couldn't get off work. So then, okay, Savannah, and Savannah is gonna be our vice president next year. She's been our chief secretary this year, and now she's gonna be our vice president. Delaney couldn't get off, Callie must not have been able to get off work. Austin just did his third, finished his third year. He had his wisdom teeth out today, so we excused him from being here, and so he will be back. And then last but not, and, and Austin's gonna be a co-president next year, he's been vice president. Last but not least is Nat. He's just finished his second year. Nat has been our president and our historian, and this year, he's gonna continue, or next year be a co-president for us, so, so I appreciate all the support you guys do. We couldn't do what we do without you guys, so thank you.
Okay, I need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am the president.
Do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution. Of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Can we be excused?
Yes. No? Hey, I tru, I trump here, yes. These kids, these kids.
She can, she trumps everything.
And every Wednesday night here, and they put in numerous hours, so yes.
You bet.
We appreciate everything you do and for doing the hard part, and that's judging your peers.
Can I say one thing?
The proof, yes, you will.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But the proof in this program is the fact that we keep it going is because of your success. You, as a governing body, against your peers, is what's really made the success of this program. So we all do appreciate that. So yes, Mr. Tom, Councilman Thomas?
Oh, wow. You just got older. I keep hearing about the deadbeats that are out there, the kids that are deadbeats. I look at you guys, and you're not deadbeats. I applaud you more than I can clap loud enough, that you are doing things that many of the youth evidently aren't doing. And I, I just think it's neat that you do, I never, you know, I mean, because of you, we hear you every year for 27 years, now 28, and that, and what a great thing you're doing, you know, and the thing that is touching to me, you don't know, and maybe you never will know, the lives that you touch, and the things that you do by what you're doing here, and I applaud you for that.
Thank you. Okay. Is that it?
You can leave now.
Thank you very much. Did you want to say something? Because I was gonna say.
Can I go?
No. So, anyway, thank you, everyone, once again for being here, and we'll continue on to our last item under our verbal petitions, but I guess I should say that certainly, on behalf of the family, I mean, if you, we appreciate you guys being here, but don't feel like you have to stay either. So I'm gonna go ahead and move on to our proclamation, which is to acknowledge National Service Dog Month, and I'll just go ahead and read this so that everyone knows that as a city, we do acknowledge them. So, whereas the city of Leighton recognizes the profound impact that service dogs have on the lives of individuals and the disabilities enhancing their independence, mobility, and quality of life. And whereas approximately 70 million adults in the United States live with a disability representing 27% of adult, of the adult population, and approximately 7.5 million, million children representing, and over 15% of juveniles in the United States have a disability. That's an eye-opener. And whereas the United States is home to an estimated 500,000 service dogs who play a crucial role in assisting individuals with disabilities, including those with mobility impairment, visual and hearing impairments, autism, epilepsy, diabetes, and post-traumatic stress disorder, among others, by providing vital support, companionship, and a sense of security. And whereas National Security Dog Month provides an opportunity to raise awareness about the increased, or about the incredible contributions of service dogs, honors the dedicated individuals who train and care for those remarkable animals, and celebrate the profound bond between service dogs and individuals they serve. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Joy Petro, Mayor of Leighton City, in the state of Utah, along with the Leighton City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Security Dog Month, and encourages citizens to be respectful of the rights and safety of those in our community afforded to the adults, children, veterans, and their service dogs who lead more independent lives because of their assistance. I cause this to be placed on the seal of Leighton, Utah, to be affixed on this 18th day of September 2025. So that pretty much concludes all of our verbal petitions at this time, so now we'll turn it over to kind of one of our, our important parts of our meeting, and one that we, we also enjoy, and that is any citizen's comments. So if there's anyone here in the audience that's wished to address us, you're pleased, welcome to do so. You can step up to the podium, just state your name, and then, you know, we, you're speaking on one item, if you could, please, limit it to three minutes, but just also know that we will not get into a dialogue, but certainly we'll take all the information and make sure we get back to you and, or take whatever action necessary. So the time is now yours for citizen comments. Okay, being that there's none, let's go ahead and go on to our consent item. Tonight, we have one item that will be presented, and this is gonna be by Mr. Dave Price, and it's in recognition and authorizing the approval of a Leighton-Utah 2025 Community Committee.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. This evening, I have the great opportunity to present Resolution 2546. If approved, this resolution will recognize and approve the creation of Leighton-Utah 250 Community Committee. The United States Semi-Quincentennial Commission was established by Congress in 2016 to plan and orchestrate the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence of the United States. Governor Spencer J. Cox and the Utah State Legislature created the America 250 Utah Commission, called America 250 Utah. The mission of the America 250 Utah is to commemorate, celebrate, and reflect on our nation's past, build community, and look forward to the future by educating and engaging and uniting Utahns and visitors to our city and state. Leighton City desires to create a committee of residents and staff to help advise and create activities and events that will engage and educate our residents. On the historic value and importance of 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, the creation of this committee, along with the appropriate application to America 250 Utah, will allow Leighton City to apply for grants, assist with this effort to advertise Leighton's activities, along with the state and other local events, partner with America 250 Utah, and utilize its logo. This committee will be created with the following charter members: Mayor Joy Petro, Kelly Brunson, Lamont Hamilton, April Parker, Pamela Petroff, Austin Green, Kimberly Zigmund, Joellen Grandy, Gabriella Bridges, Josie Newbolt, and myself. This committee will work with the mayor and council and staff to create activities and opportunities to join together to learn about and to celebrate this milestone for our country. Staff recommends that the council adopt Resolution 2546 to recognize and authorize the approval of the Leighton-Utah 250 Community Committee to advise the city council on ways to commemorate and celebrate America's 250th anniversary. Any questions this evening?
Go ahead.
Just one. On your sheet, the last name, but Dave Price, don't put myself, so when they print it, we kind of know who it was.
I could put either, and they'll still get me mixed up with you, Dave.
Okay, Council, do you have any questions on it?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, being that we only had one item tonight, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council for action regarding Resolution 25-46.
Mayor, I make a motion that we pass, sorry, we adopt Resolution 25- We'll now move on to our public hearing portion of our meeting, and with that, we've got two items. We'll go ahead and start out, Weston Capollone is going to present both items for us tonight, so we'll start out with the first one, which is the Leighton Park Plaza condominium.
Thank you, Mayor and council. There we go. Before you tonight is a condominium plat amendment. The applicant is David Felt, representing Snow Creek Management LLC and the Association of Unit Owners of Leighton Park Plaza Condominium. They're requesting an amendment to the Leighton Park Plaza condominium subdivision, which is located in the MU zone. You can identify the MU in that pinkish purply color to the northeast and to, excuse me, and adjacent is R18 Single Family Zoning, which is the yellow, and CP2 zoning, which is commercial zoning, which is the red. The amendment involves combining or enclosing a walkway that is owned by the Association of Unit Owners, which is classified as common space. See if I, this is what the amendment would end up looking like, and this is, this identifies the hallway that's being enclosed. The purpose of combining the walkway with Unit 9 is to allow for an existing tenant of the building to expand their business into the enclosed area. The removal of the walkway does not restrict access to any of the other users of the building. On August 26, 2025, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the council approve the amendment, the amended plat for Leighton Park Plaza Condominium, Second Amendment, subject to meeting all city requirements outlined in staff memorandum. Staff supports the recommendation of the Planning Commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, council, questions?
Just, they're going to enclose it?
Yeah, it'll just.
So when it's done, it'll look like part of the building?
Part of the unit, yep.
Yeah, okay.
It's already enclosed. It's just going to be, instead of a hallway, it'll be a part of Unit 9.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
So it's currently an enclosed hallway, and is there any area of that open to the outside, like the roof, the ceiling? Is it windows or anything? It's just?
Nope.
Okay.
Pretty simple. Anything else? Okay. Seeing that there's none, we can go ahead and open up the public comment portion now, or open up for public comment regarding this item. I need a motion from the council.
Madam Mayor, I move that we open the public hearing for the, can I just open it?
Yes.
For everything, okay. Open the, I move that we open the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you have it. So if anyone, once again, is here to speak on this item or wish to elaborate anymore, then you're more than welcome to step up to the mic. Okay, being that there's none, council, I'll bring it back to you. We do not need to close the public hearing, but let's go ahead and take action on this item, and then we'll move on to the second item.
Mayor, I move that we approve the amended plat for Leighton Park Plaza, Second Amendment.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Being that this is a public hearing, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote on this. Start out with Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
That was an aye?
Aye, sorry.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Councilmember Smith Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Bloxum?
Yes.
And Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, there you have it. That passes unanimously. We'll now go on to item number B of our public hearing portion, which is to amend the Leighton City Municipal Code. So with that, Weston, do you want to go ahead and take over?
Thank you, again, Mayor. Before you tonight is a text amendment to amend the zoning code. The city has received a petition from Trevor Thomas, the, who is the, one of the owners of Innovative Dance. The applicant is requesting to amend the municipal code 1906170, commercial uses in the manufacturing zoning district, to allow Innovative Dance to obtain a business license at 1435 West Hillfield Road. On April 7, 2025, the applicant's business license application for the dance studio was denied because of, because the property located within the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Industrial Zoning District already contained an existing commercial use, subject to the L4 limitation, which states no more than 40% of the total interior building area of the development site shall be occupy, shall occupy uses listed in the Table 6.2 as L4. The existing, excuse me, the, to allow for reasonable development of these athletic uses, and to address the, the application that came before, staff took a look and identified some reasonable standards that could, could be applied, and that's what's before you tonight. The, the text amendment would allow these three main criteria, which was an exemption for athletic uses located in the M2 zone within 275 feet from arterial roadway. It would create definitions for athletic center and sports facility, studio, health, land uses, and update the land use regulation table to state what the, where the land uses are permitted. The new exemption to the limitations are to the L4 criteria and would allow this business to operate, as well as other businesses that are in similar fashion. The target allowance supports increased development of the athletic uses in the M2 industrial zone along arterial corridors, such uses, where such uses are appropriate and accessible to nearby residential areas. At the same time, it preserves the majority of industrial districts, the industrial district areas for traditional industrial uses. The draft ordinance before you tonight is really intended to create and provide flexibility for athletic-related commercial uses while maintaining and preserving the industrial health of the city. The Planning Commission reviewed this on, if I can get my page to turn, August 26, 2025, and voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council to adopt the proposed amendments in Title 19, zoning, Chapter 19.02 definitions, and Chapter 19.06 land use regulation as proposed. Staff recommends, staff supports the recommendation of the Planning Commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay, council?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, Weston, I was trying to find it in my notes, but it looks like there is a, the business owner requested that the space be, let me start over. The business owner requested that there be an opportunity to use up to 70% of these types of locations for the stated new uses, the definitions that you, that you've outlined, and it looks like staff has chosen to allow up to 100%. Can you just explain the reasoning and why you were willing to go even higher than what the applicant was looking for?
Yeah, absolutely. It's actually just more of a different thought process. So how it currently is drafted in the ordinance is that it's 40% of the development site, and staff has interpreted that development site as an existing building. And so what the request from the applicant was is 70% of a development site, and then to reclassify a development site as a development area that's constructed by one person irregardless of phasing and necessarily when the buildings are built and lot splits. That becomes really hard for staff to manage, especially over years and years and years of time, not knowing when buildings came and went and what they were built with. And so when we looked at it, we said, that's really difficult for us to manage, but what we could manage is a standard that did a similar thing and limited in the areas that we're mostly concerned about, but allowed those uses to still operate. So we feel like it does what they're looking for and what we feel like is functional, but makes it easier for staff to regulate.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Bloxum?
Yeah, a few questions, Weston. Can you, we had a previous text amendment a little while ago that came in similar, kind of similar circumstances, where the business was, you know, nonconforming in some way. There was a text amendment that was proffered, and we actually denied it because staff was not recommending it because of some circumstances, consequences beyond that specific area. Here we have a situation where, kind of a similar situation. Can you tell me, and maybe just explain to the public, why you think this one is different and distinct than the previous one that was rejected?
Yeah, absolutely. So staff takes a holistic view of these. While inherently, the business is a great thing, we want to make sure that the regulations apply evenly and that there's a balanced approach. And so we looked at 18 years where the history on the business licenses, we identified where they were coming in, where they were spreading out throughout the city, and we identified that there are a number of these that are taking retail spaces, and not that that's a bad thing inherently, but these are, these are industrial spaces that really function as flex spaces, where these users really would work well preserving some of our retail use. And so if there's an opportunity, and this business actually is a good example, where they actually were in a retail space before and moved to industrial space because they needed more flex space. That's a great opportunity for us to get another retail user in. So we identified that as a, as a really good positive. Another positive is that these corridors really bridge the gap from the residential to the commercial, and they don't fully function as 100% industrial. They function as flex use. They were built as flex use. And so we feel like the, amending this code is really mirroring how the buildings were intended to be used in the first place.
Right, yeah, thank you, thank you for that. And can you talk to me a little bit about the communication that, you know, once the denial and I guess the appeal process, and we had the letter that was dated in June, can you talk to me about what the city's communication was with the business, purported business, you know, applicant, about their ability to continue to do business without a business license within the city?
Yeah, absolutely. So I will state that, once they identified that they were operating without a license, they were very cooperative and have been trying to come into compliance, and that is why they submitted a text amendment. And as part of that communication, we told them with the submittal of a text amendment, we would not pursue any charges or pushing them out of the space until there was a resolution with the council on this text amendment. So we're waiting on that.
Appreciate that, just so that, you know, there's not an understanding that business licenses are just voluntary, you know, that we just kind of don't really care about them. I appreciate that. I also appreciate the ability to not, you know, dig your heels in as a staff and not just say, well, that's what this, that's what the ordinance says, deal with it. Because I, to your point, I think that the ordinance that you've outlined here in the text amendment, I think, is a nice way of reimagining what the space could look like, and you're mentioning of taking areas that potentially could be taking up retail space we have in other areas, and that this was really only focused on an area on Gordon and an area on Hillfield, so it's not necessarily going to spread throughout the city where we have all these, you know, businesses taking advantage of industrial spaces. So I just, kudos to you and your team for, for being willing to think outside the box and being willing to change things to make business more, you know, accessible in the city, so I just appreciate that. And thanks for the answers to my questions.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Councilman Morris?
Thanks, Mayor. Weston, could you show the, just for the benefit of, Councilman Bloxum mentioned the corridors, yeah, that's what we're talking about.
So this is along Gordon Avenue, in the industrial area, and then this is along Hillfield. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, thank you. I just wanted to see those two.
Thank you.
And I, as well, want to let the staff know that this is, this is what we do. We try to find ways to say yes, not ways to say no. That's what a business-friendly community does. Times, the economy's not great for everybody right now, and having space that's just empty because of an ordinance that, quite frankly, you've, you just gave us the example of why you wouldn't, it shouldn't be that way.
Yeah.
Is, I just appreciate that approach, and so let's fill the building.
Absolutely.
Let's not have it just sitting there, and it's, and it's, it helps the community, it helps the businesses, and so, once again, I appreciate the, and appreciate working with the business owner with the licensing process and, and that communication, so thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, just my comment, which was along the lines of what both Councilmember Bloxum and Councilmember Morris just mentioned, but I just appreciated the city's responsive, responsiveness to changing, you know, ordinance for the needs of the city. And I think, and I was talking to someone about a month or two ago, and just thinking about a lot of ordinances that are on books for many, many years for certain reasons, and the ordinance that we were talking about tonight and a few months back, it was put into place for a particular reason in trying to maintain, you know, the certain types of businesses that were going into that space, but not knowing what would happen, you know, 10, 15 years down the road, and knowing that we would need these types of businesses and that these would be awesome opportunities for what we do have here in the city. And so I just wanted to also express my appreciation just for being willing to see what can we do, how can we make, how can we make this work? And then I think it is not lost on us as a governing body, and it shouldn't be lost on the residents either, to understand that these type of businesses, whether it's dance, gymnastics, karate, you know, you name it, all of these types of businesses that our kids are participating in, and we spend so much time and money participating in, that they can go in a location like this, and then that opens up the opportunity for other of those retail, you know, businesses that people say, we need this in Leighton, we need that in Leighton. In order to have those things here, those businesses here, you have to have space that is conducive to those businesses, and it needs to be in areas where those businesses want to come. And so this just helps us to, you know, like you said, balance out everything for our city and for our residents, and those who come here, who spend money here, who help us with other, other things that we, you know, that we so enjoy. So thank you for just being willing to be flexible and figure things out.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. There's no other questions then? I'll actually turn it over to the public, see if they wish to make any comments on Seeing that there's none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the council then for action regarding ordinance 25-21. Look for a motion?
I'll make a motion, but first I'll echo my thanks. It's all been said, but thank you to you and your department, Weston. This is a good move, I think. I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 25-21.
Second.
Before I acknowledge that, can I also have a motion to close the public hearing? Sorry, I failed to mention it earlier.
And close the public hearing.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved in second. Once again, we'll do roll call vote, so I'm gonna, I'll mix it up this time. How about Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Best you.
You're voting.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith Edmondson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Bloxum?
Yes.
Okay, there you have it, it's unanimous. Okay, that was the last item on our agenda for tonight. Counsel, if there's no unfinished business, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
I do have one more question.
Sure.
Just a question. Unfinished business technically means we've talked about it before.
Correct.
Correct. All right, thanks.
And I make a motion to adjourn.[1757.23][1757.23](LAUGHING).
You're voting on them, you're voting on your public hearing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I make a motion to adjourn, in case you didn't hear me.
Okay, I'll acknowledge that motion to adjourn. Once again, thank you all for being here and for participating in tonight's agenda. Thank you.